That was formed several months ago, came up with a report, and I think the chief wants to talk about that and some other steps that we've taken to calm things down, we hope. Chief Kyle.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Basically, here to report on the accomplishments to date of the multi-house task party and to give you a report on what our recommendations, which we released April 23rd, sorry, August 23rd, have resulted in to date so far. I'm sure where we started our work in mid-June, meeting weekly through the summer. We had several lengthy discussions about new ordinance, existing ordinance, enforcement philosophy, constitutional law, et cetera. Essentially, where we are right now is in line with the recommendations that I released to Council and to the public through the media on August 23rd, which was basically a recommendation for more stringent enforcement of the existing nuisance party law. And that basically, a hint that we would continue to work on possible new ordinance. In regard to new ordinance, what we're looking at right now is an ordinance perhaps on chronic nuisance houses, perhaps a recommendation of pass ordinance, this is if a house continually has nuisance party problems, that we could have additional maybe sanctions on that house, which might involve the premise owners.
Some works for those kinds of things. We have been researching throughout the United States for existing law, dealing with these kinds of fests, for lack of a better term. But we simply haven't found existing law. Of course, we've consulted with the Law Director's Office on some ordinance that we were looking at regarding multi-house parties, and we just haven't been able to get past the constitutional hurdle of prohibiting assembly, peaceful assembly. And, you know, you may not be aware, because majority of the time you only see the aftermath of these assemblies, but essentially every one of these fest starts as a peaceful assembly and dwindles into something less desirable, certainly fueled by alcohol consumption and whatnot. So the notion that we would be able to preemptively prevent these fests from taking place is still a hurdle that we just haven't been able to leap across yet. But we are continuing our work, and we're continuing to meet weekly for the foreseeable future. In regards to the recommendations that we started essentially August 23rd, I brought some noise statistics, and I can tell you that to date since August 23rd, we've handled 71 noise violations. Sixty of those were phoned in from citizens, and 11 of those were on view by officers. Approximately 27 of those complaints either weren't related to parties. For instance, they were noise complaints about generators, construction work, single stereo with no party involved, voices, that kind of thing. And 12 of them basically were unfounded, but when the officers arrived, there was just absolutely no violation occurring. So the remaining 55 violations, we're running about a 40% rate in shutting those houses down for violation of the nuisance party. We've shut down 17 parties since August 23rd for violations of the nuisance party ordinance. 16 of those houses were cited with the administrative noise violations. And there were at least four, if not more, but I could document four, physical arrests from people from the parties for underage consumption violations and things like that. Several warnings for litter. Essentially, we run the gamut there on the violations that are enumerated in the nuisance party ordinance. So our department is very focused on trying to enforce the nuisance party ordinance as it reads, to try to, I guess you would say, affect the culture, which is something we realize we really need to do of the party atmosphere. Of course, like I said in my release, we're not trying to stop parties. We simply are trying to stop unlawful behavior that occurs at parties. And I think in this first two weeks, we've been rather successful in what we're trying to accomplish. And time will tell, certainly. Questions?
Questions?
Well, a comment to thank you for all the work that's been going into it. We'll be interested to see what possible legislation comes forward. I was just struck in looking at the activity reports that the office publishes to look at, as you're saying, the 71 reports since August. And year-to-date, there've been close to 500 noise complaints.
Yes.
And somebody, a citizen, asked me that the other day. And I think what the gist of the conversation was, is when the police are responding to that, and that's very important, but what the other thing is, is that, you know, in your police reports, you're also doing a whole range of other things. And so I guess my takeaway point was, would be, is if we can have better cooperation on the noise issues, it leaves your force able to deal with other things that are going on in the city to better protect the city.
Absolutely.
I'd point out, if you look at the activity reports, the only other thing that's going neck and neck is theft, in terms of year-to-date.
Yeah, absolutely.
So when you say we have to balance out where a force goes, you know, that's what it takes away from it, without any resources.
You're absolutely right. We have burglary, theft, robbery crimes reported to us weekly. You know, if not for the midnight shift officers, and to a lesser extent, the evening shift officers responding to noise complaints or having to take on view enforcement action for violations of nuisance party, that kind of thing, you know, they could be out patrolling, watching for these things. Now, I'm not going to overstate the benefit of deterrent patrol. There's numerous studies that say, or at least suggest, that visibility is a very limited deterrent in crime. But I can tell you that last year, we, if I have the statistic off the top of my head right, made over 2,000 traffic stops, an increase of almost 100%. And with those officers on the street with the lights, you know, most police officers are very visible with those lights and having a car pulled up to the side of the street, we noticed a significant drop in the number of vandalism complaints and number of burglar complaints. So there is something to be said for being seen and being visible. And of course, when officers are responding to 900 complaints of noise a year, it limits their ability to be seen.
Thank you.
Sure.
And secondly, I think it's just important to remind everybody that this is a health and safety issue when it comes to the multi-house party. That's why the task force began, and health and safety of our community and young people, and young people that we've been charged by them coming here to Athens, Ohio. We kind of have a responsibility to help that as well.
I agree 100%. You know, I think we've been rather tolerant over the years of house parties and noise violations. And, you know, I think it's time to affect the culture in the city. Again, we're not saying that they can't have parties. We're saying do it safely, do it legally. Illegal conduct is illegal conduct regardless of when it takes place, at a house party, at a fest, at Halloween, it doesn't matter. And that's what we're focused on, is the illegal activities. So I agree with you 100%.
Thank you.
I too. I want to thank you for all the hard work that you and the task force did. I want to also point out the fact that the task force was comprised of both affiliates of Ohio University as well as the city itself. And so that's what's worth mentioning as well for the hard work that has been done on this. And I understand the visibility, but I'm hoping that the new coloring of the new police cruisers, the way they look will draw attention and aid in that, which is, for those of you who haven't seen, is pretty shook-looking cars that are rolling around out there. But regardless, my hat's off to you and the task force.
Yeah, I would pass on your praise to my staff, the police officers and the COs that work. They're the ones that are actually implementing the plan. And, you know, I'm biased, obviously, but I think I have a great staff. And I praise them because right now, where we are staffing-wise, it's usually three to four officers on evening shift, three to four officers on midnight shift. That's fully staffed. And so we have four officers handling, you know, 30, 35, 40 complaints a weekend of noise and things like that. I'd also praise the students themselves. Not only are we receiving significant cooperation from the party hosts, we had a significant amount of cooperation from students involved with off-campus housing, who helped us put out the message on opening week, or return week, however you care to look at that, promoting this notion that we were going to be a little more stringent in enforcement of the nuisance party ordinance. And so I also think that there's a silent majority of Ohio University students that really appreciate and desire what we are doing. They don't want to see these things go unchecked anymore as well. So I'll pass your praise on to all those folks.
I have one other, one other thing.
Go ahead.
I would just add, and let's bring along the business community and everyone else as well, to appreciate the fact that we are trying to provide a safe and healthy environment. And I know that you've done some work on that as well.
Yeah.
And I think that's really important, because they as well do advertising and promoting of things that necessarily aren't healthy for our community sometimes.
I agree. I agree. And we've received total cooperation from the businesses that we've spoken to about their messaging. I think I know what you're talking about. So.
Thank you for all your work. I know there's been some very trying times at certain events here, over the, you know, past few fests that we've had especially. And I think a real answer is hard to come by, and I appreciate all the work that's going into trying to find one. I'm curious to know, I think for good public policy, especially in a case like this, I think we need something that's fair, something that is predictable by people that are affected by the enforcement policy. And so my question is, I can't remember how many, you said 40% shutdowns of the parties, and what was the total number?
Seventeen total parties have been shut down for violations of nuisance party. Zero citations.
Okay.
Zero arrests, at least that I could document today. I did see where one person was arrested for underage consumption, litter, noise, and nuisance party. They were all listed in the activity log, but I could not find the arrest report indicating that that person was cited with violation of nuisance party. That's not uncommon. Our arrest records, at least electronically, run a bit behind. So
Sure.
It may, it's possible that at least one person was physically arrested, but I think that was probably just a catch-all in the log. They were actually probably only arrested for underage consumption and warned for all the other things. All the other parties, the other 16, were strict warnings and orders to cease and disperse, which is part of that law. Which was essentially the internal directive that I gave to the department was, we need to start with warnings and have the people shut down, you know, the party hosts shut down their parties. And then as we go, much like the noise violations, if we have chronic offenders, then the citations will probably appear. And as you're aware, that ordinance provides a second violation within, I think, it's either 180 days or 18 musculating offense, but I don't predict that will happen. That was a part of the noise violation as well, and I think it's only happened four times since 1997. So we do receive significant cooperation from people when we arrive at the doorstep at sometime between 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM, or 3:00 AM. So.
And to, sorry, if I could follow up on that a little. So the big question, I think, for, probably for a lot of people out there that have parties, are what defines a nuisance party? And we have a legal definition in our code, but that includes something such as creating a condition that could cause inconvenience, or some language similar to that. And so I think to have a clear definition and convey a clear message as to exactly what would be considered, and I guess with the warning, the internal policy to do warnings first, you can do that in some fashion.
And we do answer those kinds of questions. And obviously, when we shut down a party, people say, "Why?" And we explain why. The nuisance party law is available, you know, on our website. We put that information out and linked it in all the press releases that we did. But I can tell you that, you know, alcohol violations, specifically underage consumption of container, things like that, public urination, defecation. One of the big violations that I would instantly shut a house party down for would be launching projectiles from the party, which isn't enumerated in the nuisance party specifically, but it's kind of caught in that end sentence that says, "Any condition that creates a safety hazard or could be offensive." Clearly, launching a beer can at a police officer or, you know, somebody across the street, that kind of thing, is going to get a party shut down. Noise violations, especially egregious violations, you know, we, our log was riddled with complaints of noise, where we would find three or four people on the porch listening to a boombox or an iPhone or something like that. And we would simply warn them and have them turn it down and take the three or four people inside. But we have responded to at least 17 parties where there were considerable amounts of people in the yard and in the house. And, you know, PA systems set up on the porch, and those are pretty egregious violations when you look at existing law. So they were shut down.
I want to say thank you also to everybody who volunteered their time on the council, on this meeting. What I would like to point out is, what we're asking of people who have parties, is we're asking them to go and be part of the community, and be respectful of their neighbors, as, also as we respect their rights to gather peacefully and have a good time. And having, I think that when we ask more of students or other people who are having parties, then they'll, you know, my idea is always, if you ask more, people will kind of rise to the occasion. So I hope that we take the opportunity to do some education and to have students really stand, you know, come out and say, "Hey, this is a," and be very supportive of this, because I think that there is a silent majority of students. I know in my area, people, you know, but they feel powerless because they don't, it's like ratting out their friends, sort of thing.
No.
So I think, I mean, I'm calling all the time. I'm sure I'm one of those, you know, people who called in, one of the things of, because I'm sure that the students next door to us aren't necessarily comfortable doing it. So we need to ensure that everybody feels comfortable calling in. And the process of calling complaints is known to everybody, and everybody is comfortable doing that. And then I think the students will, you know, rise to a higher level once we kind of get the education of, they're part of the community. We're all part of the community, and they don't have any more rights, and they don't have any less rights than everybody who lives around them. So, thank you.
I have a couple of comments about that. I agree wholeheartedly. I think the silent majority of students is in support of what we're doing, and they do need to come out and state that, you know, The Post ran a letter, editorial, editorial last week in support of what we were doing. And so I think that's just the tip of the iceberg. I agree with you that students do rise to the occasion. One things, one of the things that we recognize, and everyone else needs to recognize, I'm sure council does, is that the student population is a revolving door. Education can't stop and, or start and stop in a finite amount of time. Our education program in this regard is going to have to continue every year. And not just targeting incoming students, but students that are moving from on-campus to off-campus, which is where we sing the praises of off-campus housing, because they do so much in education and partner with us to provide that education. And so I agree with you 100%. I will say that I can't show it statistically, because we don't track affiliation on any arrest or any of our contact with people. We simply do not ask people if they're our U students or not, or, you know, any other affiliation for that matter. But based on the areas of complaints, I can tell you that about 40 to 45% of our noise complaints historically have come from students on other students.
40%?
About 40%. And if you look at these 71 noise complaints, the majority being on in places like Palmer Street, Mills Street, predominantly student-populated areas, it's obvious that the complaints are coming from students or the officers themselves seeing on-view violations. So, but I appreciate your sentiment.
Thank you. Again, appreciate your hard work and the staff as well. I applaud the efforts to deal with enforcement. It's, the way I look at it is that it's an attempt to help normalize adult behavior, to attempt to normalize the grown-up behavior that's expected when you are taking on the responsibilities of renting an apartment and being off-campus. And I think we're moving in the right direction. I have not received any complaints from members of my ward that we're over-enforcing or we're doing something that we shouldn't be doing. So I haven't received any of those brutality or anything along those lines, nothing. And the opposite, I've received support for the direction we're going. So I want to acknowledge that from the ward that I represent. The thing that I also consider is, is what we're trying to do with this normalization of behavior as we're growing up and maturing in our community is acknowledging that this behavior in the past, or what we've accepted or dealt with, would not be acceptable in communities like Gehanna or Westerville, Milford, Beechwood, Mentor, all the suburbs of any major city that our students are coming from. This behavior in the past that we've accepted in our community would not be accepted in those communities. So I think that we're on the right path with enforcement.
I agree. I agree. As I stated earlier, I think we've been rather tolerant, and perhaps too tolerant, for a variety of reasons. But when you look at the last four-year history of the fests, and you see three riots or declarations of riot in the last four Palmer Fest events, I think, you know, it's time to be more stringent, which is exactly how we've stated it. So.
And that health and safety, again, I think all you have to do is talk to the ER at O'Blenice to know the concern in terms of the health and safety and what those people go through.
Yeah.
On those, and I mean, they're there to provide that support and that, you know, that help, but what they see is incredible.
Yeah, I agree. It is. I agree 100%. In fact, we're in our planning meetings for Halloween, the Halloween event, sanctioned event, has been since 92, I believe. And I was here for that. And that event has changed so dramatically since I started at the police department to now. And in our planning meetings, I'm talking to the head nurse for the ER, the nurse administrator for the ER, and she stated that Halloween was an easy event compared to events like Numberfest.
Homecoming.
Where they have to triple their staff.
Wow.
On duty.
The Numberfest?
Numberfest, yeah. And events like that.
Which somebody is making money from.
So, I agree 100%.
A couple of things. One, of course, is that this is also in participation, this task force was separate from the J-PAC, but members of the J-PAC were involved in this, I believe. I thought the newsletter, the community assistance newsletter that went out this fall had something about the nuisance parties in there, the do's and don'ts. I read it, but I don't, I don't remember it all. I'd also like to give kudos to Ohio University, but it's increased the number of CAs, community assistants within our neighborhoods. I just want to mention that in passing, that they are committed to helping us along in working with us.
Absolutely. There were days, years passed where we had no off-campus living office. So we really appreciate their effort.
And that was on the chopping block at one point. The other one, of course, is that, the chief failed to mention, is during the summer, we have had some people reporting crimes and suspicious activities. And I want to give kudos to citizens who do that as well. We've solved some crimes, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. We've had several major breaks in major cases, a rash of burglaries, the armed robbery at the gas station on Union Street there next to Siemens, the armed robbery of Speedway. We've solved all those crimes, thanks to citizen information, citizens picking up the phone and calling us. And that's 99.9% of the time, how we are effective is communicating with the community and the citizens. You know, it's part of the reason in the spring I asked for volunteers for a neighborhood watch program. And I'm still asking for those volunteers, working with the association to try to garner those volunteers so that we can get something going. So to date, we just haven't had that much expressed interest, but we're still working on it. So.
Just a couple more questions. One is, how many of the 16 were multi-house parties so far this year?
None, that I'm aware of, none. They were, yeah, we've not had any scheduled formally or informally. And there's no indication, other than a single address on each one of these noise complaints. So I've not seen numerous house parties listed, or multi-house parties listed.
And so as this was a multi-house party task force, I guess it was larger than that in looking at?
Well, I think the notion is, is that we, just like I put in our statement, that the realization is, is that this conduct that we see at fests is also exhibited at virtually every house party, that gets complained about at least. And if we're, there can't, in my opinion, there can't be two standards. There can't be a fest standard and then a daily or weekly standard for all the other times. If we're going to address nuisance parties, we have to address single house parties as well as multi-house parties. So that's, that's the reason that we're doing what we're doing.
And I think that speaks to that level of tolerance that we've had up to this point. And you would say, there were numerous house parties on Will Street on opening weekend, but they were not trashing their place. They had the litter just picked up. I mean, you'll see the solo cups lined up on the porch, and we get that. And then they were all very cooperative when it came time to enforce the noise ordinance and, you know, the party was cleaned up. It's just changing that.
So is there a time of night when you actually start to do this with the noise? Like, I know last, there was a time last spring when you changed the policies, and I think it worked great. Is there a time now for what's being enforced now?
Well, certainly, we can fall back on the per se time limits of the noise violations, since noise violations are a triggering violation for the nuisance party ordinance. And there is some evidence, when I read the 71 noise complaints in our log, there is some suggestion that that's what the officers are doing. But the directive that I gave to the officers was that the nuisance party enforcement needs to be 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. There is no timeframe for that ordinance. So if at, well, Ms. Mosley can testify, we had conversations with houses at 3:00 Thursday afternoon of opening day to pick up their litter and to monitor their events, as they were having parties at 3:00 in the afternoon. So I would say certainly the majority of these things on view are happening at night with the per se time limit of the noise violation, but the.
So one, just one statement that I think, and other people have talked about this before, is, and I know there are people very strongly opposed to it, but I think in a situation such as Palmerfest, when we have the city completely confronting the party, and I'm talking about when it gets out of control, but sort of what leads to that, is, in my opinion, some of it's a confrontation that builds.
Mm-hmm.
And it gets worse and worse as the night goes on. And you mentioned Halloween, how that's gotten safer and safer. How did it get safer? I think the answer is that the city actually said, "Okay, we're going to close the street. We're not going to confront the people and try to clear the streets of them." And so in my opinion, I think one answer would be to shut the street down and say, "Okay, we're going to let it go from this time to this time," and set some guidelines up. We don't need to discuss that now. That's, people have been talking about that for a while. But that's what I think is one possible solution. And last is.
If I may?
Yeah.
With the strict enforcement of the nuisance party ordinance, we won't have a Palmerfest that we that we were, because the houses will have to maintain their own properties as the day goes on. It would not be allowed to get to that point. That's our feeling, at least my feeling.
That's correct. And just to point out one significant difference, the Halloween event takes place entirely on public property. These fests occur predominantly at private property, and therein is the rub, so to speak, that there's private property and government is a little limited in how we can regulate private property. The confrontation comes between the public safety officials trying to maintain the public right-of-way through, behind, in front of, the private property. And when that private event spills over into the public right-of-way, that's the conflict that arises. And so if you were to, I don't know, sign over the public property, so to speak, like you do a Halloween event, I don't know how that would affect it. I'm not entirely certain, given the proximity to all that private property, that that would be the effective way to do it. But as you said, you know, we don't need to discuss it tonight. We just want to point that out.
Just one idea. Thank you. And last question is, when we changed the nuisance party ordinance from four violations to a single condition, we were told that there would be an internal policy that it would require four conditions still as the threshold.
Right.
Is that still being taken as your approach?
No. If you recall, when I spoke to council, and I don't remember how many years ago, probably three or four years ago, we did have that internal policy. We kept that right up until August 23rd of this year. I had made the statement in council that evening that we would hold to that policy in all but exigent circumstances. If anything would be considered an exigent circumstance, in my mind, it would be three years of riots out of at least a fest and exacerbated conditions like the money that we spend, the $70,000 to $80,000 we just spent to police fests last spring quarter alone. I certainly view those as exigent circumstances, so I'm very comfortable in telling the officers to enforce the nuisance party ordinance based on one violation. Of course, the officers still maintain their discretion, and I've done nothing to take that away. But basically, what I've done is allowed them to enforce the nuisance party ordinance on warning and shutdowns on one violation if they feel it's appropriate.
Thank you, Chief, for being here, listening to us with our concerns and answering them. I just want to reiterate what I heard in all this discussion, was that you and your officers are in education mode right now. And I personally really appreciate that, the combination of the strictness and the education that goes with it, without penalties being involved, except maybe possibly in one extreme case. We have lots of other business to take care of.
Thank you.
Again, Chief, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll have more meeting.
Okay.
We need to move on to Finance and Personnel Committee. Member Nysley, I believe, will begin this discussion. Go ahead.
We have four agenda items tonight, the first one being the appropriation ordinance that will come before you. And given the holiday weekend, and we are at this point having some of the discussion for an ordinance that will be introduced tonight, that would normally happen at a committee meeting the week before, but for this evening's purpose, we're talking about it now. So that appropriation ordinance is attached to your agenda, and there are five elements to it that I will just very briefly explain now. The first one is a request for $3,500 to the general fund for the auditor, and this is for online tax filing software and corresponding secure email system for the auditor's office that will be put in place. And I think that online tax filing will be a real advantage for us to be able to do this now. Second item is $15,000 to DUI grant fund, and that will be to cover payroll from now until the end of the year. That fund is a little bit short right now. The third item is $40,000, and this is for the Athens share of the Athens City Transit System. We have paid this in years, we contribute to it each year to the operation of it. And the recommendation is for this to be taken from the Athens Enhancement Fund. The next item is $15,000 for the Community Center. The money is there in the unappropriated balance. They have a need for some additional money for supplies from now till the end of the year. The last item is for $175,000 to the Internal Service Medical Fund. And tonight's allocation, we will, I'll explain briefly tonight. I would like to revisit this between now and the end of the year. Very basically, as background, the city of Athens is self-insured, and each year, we set aside money, and that amount is $1,025 per pay, per employee, so that for each employee, we have $12,300 set aside per year. At this point, we're needing to transfer $175,000 into this fund because of higher claims that we've had experienced during the year with the employees. It's going to leave a balance in that account of only $75,000. And that's the reason that I'm, that we're recommending that we move forward with this appropriation tonight, but revisit that discussion because we may want to look at or consider raising the amount that we have set aside to a slightly higher amount than $1,025 per pay, per employee, so that we have a larger cushion in that account in case we experience, like we have this year, the higher claims. And those are the five elements within the appropriation ordinance for tonight. A second item that we have is an update on the perfection contract, and this is for Phase Two. And if you may remember that Mr. Rick Anderson came, and we looked at a spreadsheet considering different kinds of improvements that we would be moving forward with. And given the expense of these items for Phase Two, we decided to approve the lighting portion before we recessed in July. We had a flyer from AEP talking about the rebate that was offered, and what we didn't quite realize is that the work actually needed to be completed by August 31st for us to get the entire $7 per light rebate. We're still eligible, we have a copy of the coupon, and Service Safety Director Mosley, you might help us with this. I think we're still qualified, is that correct, for the five?
We absolutely are. It does not change the dollars that you're put into this, a little over $115,000. It just was a communication to you, we felt like we couldn't proceed until we said, we're just going to get the lesser of the rebate. And there's still, I think it's attachment fee or a number of savings that we will receive.
So, that second rebate, $5 per light, is if we complete the work anytime between now and November 30th. And so, do we feel like we're.
We do, we feel.
Able to complete that, so we can get the full $5?
We're able to say as the committee do back to us that, go ahead and proceed, we'll enter into it, and we think we'll need that.
So, I don't hear any opposition to it, then you can consider it less to move forward with that rebate, with all due speed, so we can get as much money back as we can. Third item that we will be considering tonight will be a resolution, and this is for accepting the county rates. Each year, the Athens County Auditor issues an announcement saying, these are the Athens property tax rates, and that is attached to our agenda tonight. What this allows us to do is the city of Athens then to be able to get their share of the property tax that's inside the city limit, so we can receive the portion of money that's due the city. So we'll be looking at that resolution. The fourth item that we have tonight regards finances as they relate to applying for several grants, an Issue One Grant and a Clean Ohio Grant. And Transportation Chair, Councilmember Gosny is going to review those.
Thank you. And feel free to jump in if I miss a little bit of it. So the first part will be an application for Issue One Funds for 2013, and we would be combining these with CDBG funds to do a pretty comprehensive upgrade of Columbus Road and North Lancaster Street up to Mound. So this would be the entire length of Columbus Road, I believe, and then Lancaster on through to Mound Street, including water and sewer upgrades that need to happen, sidewalks, repaving and restriping of the road there. It's a little early, we don't have final plans yet, but some people have asked about sidewalks and what happens and where we put them, when we need them. And we're not sure yet, but one possibility for the Columbus Road portion would be to have wide shoulders like we did on Palmer Road a few years ago. Now, the people that live down there, I heard a lot of good feedback when we did that. So that's one possibility for this section. So we will, yeah, go ahead.
It will also include stormwater.
The stormwater.
Which is a big issue. The drainage.
Definitely. Thank you. So we will have a first reading to allow us to enter into the application to be competitive for those funds. We will need some surveying to be done pretty soon, so we won't be doing the first reading yet, but so we'll have a little bit more time to digest that, but that will be internal money that we'll have to spend in order to be eligible for these projects. The second item was Clean Ohio Conservation Funds that we would like to apply for, and we don't know the exact use yet, the city's been looking at a few different pieces of land to purchase for conservation and recreation. And so we've done this at some points in the past, and we're hoping that we can apply for these funds this year as well. And so we have a first reading of authority to enter into that application up tonight.
We will be asking for a suspension of the second minute.
Thank you.
For the Issue One.
And the resolution, I mean, is the three reading resolutions, am I correct, Kathy? And is it suspended now?
Yes, yes, it's due by October 1st, so it can go till the next meeting, but needs to be suspended.
Any other questions, comments, any other agenda items that I might have not remembered? Okay?
Unless I hear otherwise, we're just going to proceed, we're going to leave our committee meetings and move right into our council session. No comments?
Okay.
It's 7:44. We usually start our council meetings about 7:30, so we're starting a little bit late. The first thing we need to do is establish a quorum. I see six council members here, myself, that establishes a quorum. Then we have disposition of two sets of minutes. The regular session held July 16th, 2012, and a special session held July 23rd, 2012. I have a motion to accept these minutes.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of accepting these two sets of minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. We do accept the minutes of July 16th and July 23rd. I don't, as President, have any special communications. Let's ask our other officials, Mayor Wile.
Couple things. One is that starting September, we.
At least our sewer rates are about 3 percent. There was a public notice put out on that. This reflects in.
Did you say there has been a note?
Yes, went out in the media. I think it's reflected in ordinance 07511, maybe, in terms of the rate increases. Another item, of course, is that we moved the planner down to 28 Kern by the code office and the engineering public work, so they can all flow together a little bit better. And let's see, the last item I have is, well, that's about it, I think. That covers most of it. I'm sure you've seen all the construction going on, and we're wrapping it up as fast as possible.
Service Safety Director?
Did I miss anything?
I don't believe you did. I just would like to state that the city planner will hold meetings up here still at City Hall, and we're working on getting his phone replaced, but this will work nicely. Need to contact the planner, because City Hall's still, and we're getting one.
Which building is he in?
Code.
Code. Thank you, okay.
28 Kern.
Auditor, hi Kathy, have you got anything to say?
No report, but welcome back.
Thank you.
And Law Director.
No report.
Okay, we'll move on. Actually, we have several ordinances for second reading, and normally, on second reading, that's exactly what happens. The ordinances get read with no action. If a sponsoring member needs to take some action, please let me know.
I don't need to take action, but since we've been gone for a while, these are all related to Halloween, and so they'll be up for third reading in two weeks. Several different ordinances, one, two, three, four, I lose track, four, just to help ensure the safety of that event.
This is second reading, second reading for Ordinance 8412, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 27th and 28th, 2012, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens Halloween weekend. Ordinance 8512, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone on Court Street and adjoining sidewalks between Union and State on October 27th and 28th, 2012, Halloween weekend. Ordinance 8612, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 27th and 28th, 2012, Halloween weekend. And Ordinance 8712, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on October 27th and 28th, 2012, also Halloween weekend. Moving on to ordinances for first reading, Ordinance 9212, an ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an interfund transfer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as we discussed briefly a few minutes ago on the Finance Committee, this has several elements to it. We would be amending the appropriation ordinance for several anticipated expenses. One is $3,500 to the General Fund Auditor, 101.102, transaction code 300, for online tax filing forms and secure email. The second one is for $15,000 for a DUI grant, and this is to cover payroll, and that would be account 237, transaction code 100. The next item is $40,000 to the Athens Enhancement Fund, that's account 250, transaction code 600, and that is for the Athens City Transit System. The next one is $15,000 to the Community Center, 271, transaction code 200, and that is for supplies that are needed by the Community Center between now and the end of the year. And the last item is, oh, excuse me, the next item is $175,000 to the Internal Service Medical Fund, 866, transaction code 300, and this covers medical claims through year end and increases the total appropriations. And then from the Enhancement Fund, 250, to Transportation Fund, 214, we would be transferring that $40,000. And I would, at this point, now that I've offered this whole explanation, ask that we consider this under suspension of the rules.
Second. Did we hear a second?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules on Ordinance 9212, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of Ordinance 9212.
Second.
And as described previously.
All those in favor of accepting Ordinance 9212, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been passed and accepted, okay. Ordinance 9312, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Wednesday, October 31st, 2012, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM for trick-or-treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association, introduced by Councilmember Gosny.
Thank you. I would like to move adoption of. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 9412, or, I'm sorry, first reading. We're going to let this go through all its readings.
Okay.
Ordinance 9312 is for Uptown Trick or Treat?
It's for the next
Next time, I'm trying to do the math here. Okay. So to make sure it's in effect, we will probably be asking for suspension at an upcoming meeting. Excuse the confusion on the suspension there. This is an annual event that the Athens Uptown businesses have had for a few years now, and it brings a lot of families into the Uptown area for this Halloween night. Very successful event. A lot of fun, I think. It creates traffic, so if you're traveling in the Uptown area that night, be aware of it.
I would point out that this has been going on for quite a few years, beside the street.
Because it was getting more popular over time. And that was one of the issues, that you had a lot of kids on the sidewalks, and with the traffic going down Court Street, it could be a problem. So we've changed that. I think we made the parking, we hit the garage?
Do you?
Yes. So they can get in and out of there, but
So what are we closing from Court Street?
Union all the way down.
Union all the way down?
Yeah.
That's fine.
And so that's to ensure the safety of dozens or hundreds of kids that will be here.
Whose parents, by the way, can park free in the parking garage?
In our city garage, yes. 5:30 to 7:00.
Very good. That was ordinance 9312. Ordinance 9412, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute agreement, an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for a Clean Ohio Conservation Grant. Member Nysel. And Member Gosny, I'm sorry.
We got that piece at the end. This ordinance, as we discussed a short while ago, will allow us to apply for state money to acquire land for conservation and for recreation. We don't have an exact concrete, we don't have an idea on, we haven't decided on what land we would like to purchase, but the city has had several ideas, I believe. One of the things that is important to know is that this requires a local match. So if we do receive this grant, the city has to come up with 25% of the purchase price of whatever property is purchased.
Yes.
The 25% grant can also be in kind. So if you do surveys or any of those sort of things, title searches, those also match towards the grant. I'd like to point out that the Clean Ohio Conservation Grant was by the legislature. Even though it was voted on by the citizens of Ohio, the legislature had kept the funds, had not funded it in the budget for the last year. It took a lot of lobbying by a lot of people to get this round. And so hopefully, it will continue how I, the legislature keeps citizen initiative from being funded. I do not know. But hopefully, with a lot of people applying for the grants, they will see the need for this. So it's, the funds are supposed to be there. The legislature has kind of played political football with it, so.
The city of Athens has used these funds.
We've been very successful.
Very successful.
And we've been successful with partnering with other groups in doing it, so.
So we hope we are, we anticipate that we will be looked upon in favor again. Ordinance 9512, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and participate in the 2013 state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for Issue One funds, to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. Member Gosny.
Thank you. As mentioned before, this is to allow the city to apply for money to help improve Columbus Road and North Lancaster Street. Number improvements, as we talked about not long ago, I won't go through them again. Because of the deadlines involved in this application, we will be looking to suspend the rules in a couple of weeks on this to make sure that we can meet our deadlines imposed by the state.
Okay. A resolution for first reading, R1012, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Member Nysel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we have talked about this earlier, and it does allow us, this resolution allows us to set the paperwork in motion so that we can receive our portions of the property tax monies. We are required to have this passed by October 1st, so it is likely that at the next reading, the second reading, we will suspend, so that it can be passed in time.
And our share is?
Our share for Athens Township is 2.6, and for Kanan Township, 2.4.
Total amount's about $800,000.
Yeah, that's what I was
$804,997. So we want to make sure that we have all the paperwork in place so that we can receive it.
Absolutely. Any other comments about a regular? Okay. Announcements and other business. Could we have a motion, please, to accept the auditor's financial reports for June, July, and August?
June.
June and July, August is not there yet. Right. And Member Nysel already told me that, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just read what was in front of me.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of the motion to accept the auditor's financial reports for June and July signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Reports are accepted. And now we come to
I had a question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I don't see anything on here about homecoming and closing streets down for homecoming.
That's a parade permitted, I believe.
It's a parade, okay. So we don't do any, like, free parking or any, okay. Thank you.
It's actually a grandfather parade, so.
You don't have to charge.
Even the new, even
How about the new route? Is it grandfather, too?
It is at this time.
Okay. So it's just that it sneaks up on us a little quicker, I think, this year because of semesters.
That year will be hard on the grandfather.
October 13th? Is that later?
Yes.
I have one other question.
Yes.
City Halloween Trick or Treating, what day is that?
It's the Thursday before.
You think that's the 25th?
That's the 25th, okay.
Well, the Uptown one's actually on Halloween.
I noticed that, yes.
And then Big Kid's Party is out the weekend.
So double the opportunity for handing.
If you're keeping track.
Always good.
Oh, you can go it up.
Okay, we are at the portion of our agenda where we provide an opportunity for citizens, I'm sorry.
I'd like the committee.
I'm sorry, you have to write that down in the front.
Nothing's up to break.
I'd lose everything. Excuse me?
Yeah. I was going to announce that as well, the, for
So we do, we need to make plans for committees.
Planning.
Correct.
Please.
Okay.
I would like to request a committee next week. We will have a guest speaker, a gentleman by name of Randy Cohen, who is Vice President of Research and Policy for the Americans at the Arts. He will be speaking about the arts and economic prosperity, the data, the results, about the impact of the arts in our community. So he'll be offering a brief presentation and answering questions and helping us understand how we can prosper from this point forward with the impact of the arts.
Member Nysel.
Finance and Personnel.
I should have some items as well for Transportation.
It's going to be a nice, long night.
And then we want to add one more to the services with the Keep America Beautiful discussion.
That will be a discussion.
Excuse me?
You're right. Maybe we don't, maybe it's the following week, the following reading we need to do.
Member Patterson, did you have anything? No? And I'll just make an announcement that, reminding council members that we will be having a joint committee meeting with Students Senate at Walter Hall. I think we finally made that decision at Walter Hall
Great.
on September 24th. And I would just urge all committee heads to have some business to speak about so that the students can understand what our committees are about. Member Patterson?
There is something I wanted to bring up, which I just remembered, and that is that J-Pac will be holding a meeting on September 20th. Again, it will be in Margaret Walter Hall. It's open to all public to come and discuss issues surrounding the Joint Police Task Force or Council Committee. I believe that's at 6:30 as well.
Ours, I believe, starts at 7:00.
That's what I wanted to, thank you.
And we'll hear more about this next week, I'm sure. Now, we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items in the city services not covered on the agenda. And so therefore, we're going to move into an executive session. In this executive session, obviously, council members, law director, auditor, Service Safety Director, city engineer
I didn't get it.
And then we are Okay. All those in favor of, just, thank you for denying me this. It's only been a month. Okay. When we're going into special session, the vote to do so is a roll call vote. We'll start out with this and for Patterson.
Aye.
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 About five minutes of anybody in the press, I think.
So how about we come back about 8:10, it looks like. Six